Fourth at seven P M. Rule call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Present.
Counselor Mellon.
Present.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Present.
Counselor Coulterites.
Present.
And Counselor Gardner.
Present. If I could ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great motto of the Constitution. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to invite our new police officer, Ryan Wilson, up to the front of the podium here or the council area. And clerk treasurer Wendy Miss and police chief Steve Shackle also present for our swearing in of our new police officer.
You're gonna wanna face the audience, Mr. Ryan Wilson. Nobody wants to see you all the time. Welcome aboard. We're happy to have you here tonight. It's always very exciting when we get to do a swearing in at a public meeting like this. So raise your right hand and we're gonna try and, you know, I, Ryan Wilson.
I, Ryan Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Department of Police.
As a member of the Department of Police.
Of the Town of Munster, Indiana.
The Town of Munster, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to public comment. We kindly ask that all in-person public comment is limited to two minutes, maximum per person, or five minutes for a group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event that questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes and will refer questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow-up and response. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have questions or comments about an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comment to Tom Andrew Dustin Anderson at D Anderson. At Munster dot org. Is anyone present in the chamber, chamber area here that would like to speak to the public? Yes, and please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Yes, Debbie.
Good evening. My name is Ladan.
Yes.
My name is Debbie Straka and thank you for hearing me tonight. My address is one eight four five Housalia Drive in Munster. And my current business address is two twenty seven and a half Bridge Road, Munster, Indiana. And I do want to thank you again for having me speak. My parents moved me here from Hammond in nineteen seventy and we've enjoyed a nice life here. And a good business environment. I do have a couple of questions to pose at this time. Not asking for immediate answers. Why did Munster pay over ten thousand dollars to study the effects of a food and beverage tax? What is the town of Munster's plan to properly prepare for and manage the revenue received by a food and beverage tax? Has the town of Munster consulted with the Munster Chamber of Commerce or any food and beverage operators in the town regarding the tax? What exactly does the town of Munster plan to do with the money from the food and beverage tax? What is the impact on food and beverage operations? Will consumers just decide to bid the other towns to avoid the tax? How much revenue will the town anticipate to receive yearly from a food and beverage tax? Did Hammond approach Munster to help them pay for this study? And who is conducting the current study? Thank you for your time and I anticipate answers in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, and we will reach out to you in the next day or two election on when we will get those answers back to you. I think they're all relatively, we should be able to answer them in short time, but I will talk to you tomorrow, give a better timeframe for you, okay? Very good. Is there anybody else here in the, in the, in this area that would like to speak to the council? There was one member from. Four oh eight Nightbridge Place, Amanda and Ray Ryan Wade, that did send a comment in that would like, they would like to be have read at the meeting tonight. I will read that letter. Let's see here. Dustin County. I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but would like the following issue to be read at the town council and noted in the minutes. The following is a public comment for the December third, two thousand twenty-three Munster Town Council meeting. And this is from Amanda and Ryan Wade, four oh eight Nightbridge Place in Munster. Despite numerous emails involving residents, members of NICTI, Gary Babcock, and Dustin Anderson, a resolution has not been found for a problem-affected man in residence. Construction began at our house, four oh eight Nightbridge in West Lakes. Regularly begins well before seven A M., often around five thirty A M. The trucks have motors running and loud continuous beeping noises. Almost every day, we are woken up by these noises. This has been going on for months. Considering construction will be continuing through next year, we would like action to be taken to prohibit construction beginning prior to seven A M. in this residential area. There are numerous houses in community estates in addition to those in our cul-de-sac in West Lakes that are affected by this. We have been told that the contractors are asking that, we have been told that the contractors were asked not to start before seven A M. months ago, but absolutely nothing has changed in regards to the time that they begin their work. We do not feel like anything will change without specific ordinance in place to prohibit these noise at these hours. There are numerous noise ordinance I found in regard to dogs barking and music playing, but I have not located one specifically in regards to construction noise in residential areas. If there is an ordinance I'm unaware of, whether it be local or state, we would like it to be enforced. If there is no ordinance, we would like the town council to discuss and adopt ordinance in regards to this issue. We believe contractors need to be fined when they are found to be working outside the appropriate hours in a residential area. Please let us know. Please let us know what other steps we can take to ensure that this will happen in a swift manner. So that was a public comment from Amanda and Ryan Wade. I, I think we did, we did get this email, what about four? I should probably read it off. Approximately one o'clock this afternoon. We do have a short response from NICTI, Gary Babcock. I do think with this, this response, I will read Gary's response. I think there needs to be additional information put together and everything else. But just to show that, that there is a, a, a response to that, that again, I think council probably will have to reveal a little more detail, but. This is a response from Gary Babcock, which is from the, which is from NICTI, which is the Northern Indiana commuter transit district. I spoke with Mike R. regarding this, the message below from the Wade family. Mike R. is, is Mike, he's also.
Row. He is the project manager from NICTI for the Westlake Extension.
The normal working hours for the contractor begins at seven A M. Central Time. NICTI and NICTI's construction management understand that construction activities have not begun before the normal working hours. We have reached out to our contractor and with the Wade family's concerns. They have confirmed that the only action, activities before seven A M. are the fueling, starting, warming up inspection of the equipment. The pictures Miss Wade provided were the contractor's fueling company filling up the equipment for operation later in the morning. We can, we generally agree that equipment does not need to be started before six A M., but the contractor cannot control the arrival of the fuel truck. If actual construction activity begins seven, before seven A M. Central Time, please let NICTI know so we can take further action. We will continue to inform your team and the residents in the area with any future construction plan beginning before seven. At this time, the only work expected to, the only expected work outside of the normal hours is the C S X, which is a train line, twenty-four seven hour, hour is scheduled for the spring of two thousand twenty-four. Again, I think it's, it's safe to say that the council and staff here will follow up with NICTI with a little bit more of a conversation between NICTI, the work hours, and also the residents concerned. Okay, sorry to talk all that time. Is there anything else with public comment at, at this time? Anything else that the council would like to respond to with the public comment?
I have one thing. I thought we do have an ordinance in regards to construction. Does it start prior to seven o'clock?
It's very similar to the parks where it's dawn till dusk. So generally speaking, we don't get exercised if a contractor is working at seven A M. But also, there's a big difference between the roofing company that replaced my siding at nine four three O Cottonwood and a a multi-state billion-dollar construction project. One you can stop by and put a stop to, and the other is a little harder to enforce.
Okay, but we, but we do thank, thank the whole family for the, the comments and again, we'll be continual, continual discussion with that. Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just appreciate the fact that public comments were taken electronically beforehand and here by people in person in the chamber to help deal with the disruptions that we had past time. So hope that continues and appreciate that decision.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. President, I move to accept the consent agenda.
A second motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion with regards to consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
I noticed the sidewalk cost waiver is, and I believe this is the first time this has been enacted. I guess it's a question for staff.
It is.
Yeah, so just happy to see that residents who need assistance were able to take advantage of this program that we have passed earlier. So the sidewalks get repaired and the residents don't have a burden. Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to old business, item A, this is ordinance nineteen twenty-four for second reading. This is regarding budget reductions. Clerk Treasurer, miss anything to add?
No, there was no changes from first to second reading.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ordinance nineteen twenty-four as presented.
Second, motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to item B, this is ordinance nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty-five. This is also for second reading. This is regarding the surplus bond proceeds. Again, clerk treasurer, miss anything to add?
No, there were no changes.
Move we adopt ordinance nineteen twenty-five as presented. Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites. And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Last item under old business, item C, this is ordinance nineteen twenty-six. This is also second reading. This is regarding the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance. Clerk Treasurer, miss, there has been a slight change from the first reading. Can you please explain?
There, there was a slight change. After the first reading, the fire chief, chief Hyduk requested an increase in the fire department clothing allowance from three hundred per officer to four hundred and fifty. He additionally requested an increase in their fuel allowance from one fifty to five hundred. And those low rates, the original rates, had been in effect for many, many, many years and the change was necessary to stay current.
I think we clarify many, many, we have figured out it's at least over twenty-five years.
At least over twenty-five, we can trace the fuel. So a hundred and fifty dollars doesn't buy the fuel that I bought with twenty-seven years plus left.
Okay, sorry to add.
It's all right.
I move we adopt ordinance nineteen twenty-six on second reading as amended.
A second motion.
Very good. There's a motion, a second, any discussion with regards to ordinance nineteen twenty-six, the twenty twenty-four salary pay, pay plan? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Just one moment, please.
Okay.
I just, um. My apologies. Okay, roll call, Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. That concludes the old business. Now for new business, we have ordinance nineteen twenty-eight. This is for first reading. This is regarding group transfers.
Yes. I would be something to add. This is something that we do every year, put in motion every year. That's what, it's, uh, my apologies, I. It's after we take a review of our, our budget and then we're able to, if some funds need a little more, then we're able to do this. This gives us the authority to do so.
Very good.
All right, I'm explaining very much. So it's just moving within the bonds. So there's no budget surplus.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I move that we consider ordinance nineteen twenty-eight on first reading and schedule a second reading for the first meeting in January twenty twenty-four.
Second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Why are we not doing second reading in January instead of our second meeting in December?
Because we may not know what all the adjustments actually are gonna be. So.
And certain, and by January.
We have to know.
It's all for your end, or transition.
Makes sense.
Very good. Seeing no other discussions or questions, a roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to item B, this is ordinance nineteen twenty-nine. This is the first reading. This is amending the A R P A plan. Which is the American Recovery Plan. Clerk Treasurer, miss, anything to add to this?
Um, no, we're excited that this is the, we were awarded five, over five million dollars as part of the American Recovery Plan, the A R P funds. This will allocate all of it within the time required by the federal government. We had originally done half a million to the Parks Department as revenue replacement, one point one million to the fire, to get a purchase of a fire truck. We invested two point five million dollars in water infrastructure improvements. And then the police department requested an upgrade to their radios and the fire department. The final piece today is the fire department radios. They have more radios, so their cost is a tad higher. Any unused funds then will go into the current unallocated and will be put toward the cost of the fire department's radios. Portable radios from, we'll see more on that a little later in the meeting.
I move we hear ordinance nineteen twenty-nine on first reading. It's scheduled on second reading for the next ready or waiting.
Second motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion or questions?
One question, sure. So this would account for the remainder of the R P A funds awarded to the town?
Yeah.
Is there any thought? I know one of the things that I was interested in doing was replacing the streetlights with L E Ds. It's also, you know, time sensitive item. Assuming you do that, the more you say.
Absolutely.
Are there thoughts to capital funds available elsewhere to continue that thought?
It is ongoing. It's always being discussed and put into the plan and there was some, we received a quote, correct, to have the job worked on, so.
Okay, so allocating these funds for the radios wouldn't mean that that project couldn't go forward?
We can do both. Just different paths of money to take.
Were you gonna add something? No.
I'll just write down that note. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to item C, fire departments. This is the mutual eight-box alarm system, which is also called M A V S. Master agreement in resolution twenty-one eighteen. Fire Chief Hyduk is here. Would you like to speak to anything on this M A V S agreement?
Now, I'll just retouch on the memo. We joined M A V S in nineteen ninety-nine. In twenty fourteen, they did an updated, a major update, and now they're doing another major update to their. It's just they're getting more finite in their purpose.
This M A V S agreement was discussed at the November border safety meeting and was approved, but has been also reviewed by our attorney, Dave Weston, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think what we're really looking for here is. The, we're looking for a resolution, to approve resolution twenty-one eighteen. Is that correct, Dave?
That's correct. That adopts the agreement.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Now we go into item D, which is the purchase of the fire department radios. There is a memo here from Fire Chief Hyduk. Anything to add to the, the memo?
Uh, no, unfortunately, I'm gonna make this comment, you know, we had to comply with the combining of dispatch centers. When they did that, if you ask me, no one was ready for that. Uh, the radios that we were purchased just do not work. They weren't, the technology wasn't included enough. And now we're finiting all of that, just like the P V did. We have dead spots in buildings. If I had my portable with me right now, it would probably on the evening because I couldn't talk. It's just, it's not a good situation.
But what you're saying is this technology is, is alleviating the dead spots.
Two things. Motorola built the shelf life in their radios and it's ten years and we're there, we're over it. Secondly, the new radios will go on Wi-Fi or cellular connection, either way. So it's within our community. I don't ever see us losing a signal. Also with the schools and hospitals, they're getting Wi-Fi access point for all emergency responders, police, fire. As soon as we go into that area, it automatically flips to their Wi-Fi. It's all inclusive across the board.
Very good. Thank you.
I also wanna make mention that we tried to get a grant through Illinois with this and it fell through. So that's why we're going down. I move we include the agreement with Motorola for the purchase of fifty-five new portable radios with need accessories for the total cost of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the resolution twenty-one nineteen. This is for temporary loans. Again, another end-of-the-year type event. Clerk Treasurer, miss, anything to add to your email?
Nothing to add to the memo. These are two, this takes place at the end of the year. We do this each and every year. The first resolution for the twenty gives us the authority to do temporary loans between the bonds. And the second resolution, resolution twenty-one twenty says that in case there's a reason that we can't repay that first thing after the first of the year, it extends it until, I believe, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Historically, we do not have to do temporary loans, but it's nice to have the ability to do so as we need it.
That flows king. Mr. President, I will move to adopt resolution twenty-one nineteen as presented, authorizing temporary loans in the amounts, in amounts to be determined.
Second, there's a motion, a second, to adopt resolution twenty-one nineteen. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
If we can go ahead and adopt resolution twenty-one twenty as presented, extending the temporary loans to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
A second motion.
There's a motion, a second, on resolution twenty-one twenty. Any discussion with regards to that motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
All right, so next item, oh, I'm sorry, I'm leaving.
Uh, next on the agenda is item G. This is the engagement letter for fixed assets to Peterson Consulting Services. Clerk Treasurer, miss, anything to add to this memo?
We have used Peterson Consulting Services out of La Grange, Illinois to help us with our reporting for fixed assets. This is an engagement letter. We believe our software should be able to accomplish this, but again, this gives us the, if we need to engage Mr. Peterson, not, not to be confused with Council-elect Peterson. This, we have the ability to do so, so. We're asking for the ability to do so.
I move to be confirm the level of engagement with Peterson Consulting Services, Inc., that amount not to exceed four thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
A second motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
So, so this would only, this engagement would only take place if our software is not able to.
Exactly. And we just converted, today is our first day on the cloud, tomorrow's our first full day on the cloud, so we just need to make sure that we've got everything, all of our i's and t's. That and so, everything will be good, but just in case, if you could post it.
Very good. Any other discussion, questions, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Letter H, this is change order number one for the C C M G twenty-three dash one paving and water main improvements. Director of Public Works, Dee Tomass, anything to add to your memo?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that this is a two-part project. So this, what we're looking at right now, only one part of the project got done, and that's the streets in Twin Creek. There will be more work done in the spring with the remaining roads of this, on this C C M G grant.
Very good. There is a recommendation to the council?
Mr. President, I move to approve change order number one, the contract for the paving and water main improvements of Housalia Thicket, Pasture Gate, Tamarack, Treadway, Tudor, and Framlin. I would just move it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
And the C C M G twenty-three dash one at a cost of thirteen thousand five hundred bucks.
A second motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coulterites.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Letter I, change order number two, the west forty-five pay, uh, street paving project. Deputy, or director of public works, Dee Tomass, what I need to add to this memo?
Yeah, I guess my apologies that these were missed in the first change order. So this is just some additional cost to do the striping when we, when we split the, split the project in order to get most of the road paved while we were waiting for C S X. So there's an additional cost there and then there's the final quantity balance of five thousand dollars. So we're adding another eighty-nine, eighty-eight, ninety-three.
The C S X pay for any of the repaving?
Yeah.
Even that portion that they own?
Well, we didn't. Well, we didn't pave, no, well, we paved in their right of way, but then there's a certain area that we weren't even allowed to pave in. It would have involved a lot more permitting, so we decided not to.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, I think we might have paid them to have lagging bill.
Our reward was the grace of their approval.
Wish it hard to get.
Well, I move that we approve change order number two in the contract. You were moving like I was saying something wrong. Uh for the two, the twenty twenty-three West Forty-Fifth Street paving in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and one cent.
Second, there's motion, a second, any discussion? See, none, roll call, please.
Counselor Spoon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Last on I, item on the agenda is new business J, which is the West Forty-Fifth Street paving, release of final retainage. Director of Public Works, Dee Tomass, anything to add to this?
This is something that we do at the end of every contract, and since you've approved change order number two, we're good to go, they're all done, and we're ready to release the retainage.
Very good. I move we approve final release of retainage for the West Forty-Fifth Paving Project. The West milestone in the amount of eighty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? See, none, roll call, please.
Counselor Spoon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. That concludes the new business portion. Any reports or portfolio reports from the council?
Good re- report on the the completion of the work of the Lake County Solid Waste Management District Board. The work that had to be done because they sold, they gave up the building in Hammond that they had had for decades and bought a building in Merrillville and got uh close to done. When over Christmas vacation, the water lines burst and destroyed all their new work. And it all had to be cleared out and done over again. And this month, they have accepted the first students into the building for their programming. Including students from Munster. And they have uh, I believe, two new people in the education staff who are very enthusiastic and it seems that up and running at full capacity, so. What about waste management?
Sounds good, thank you. Um seeing all the reports, uh announcements, uh the next town council meeting will be on uh the summer eighteen, I believe that would be, that's uh the third Monday of the month at seven PM. Um see, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, so move.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned, and we'll move into the Munster Redevelopment Commission meet, regular meeting for December fourth. Is John Castro here? I don't see John here, right?
I don't see him.
Okay, uh roll call, please.
Commissioner Spoon?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Tulewitzky?
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
And our uh school board liaison is not present.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the uh uh Redevelopment Commission during the public comment section of the meeting? Did we get any email? No. Okay, then we will close the public comment section of the meeting. We'll move into the consent agenda.
And will we accept the consent agenda?
I say no motion.
There's a motion, the second, any discussion? See, none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Spoon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulewitzky?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. Uh there is no old business, no new business, no reports, any announcements from the Redevelopment Commission? See, none, entertain a motion for adjournment, so move. There's a motion, a second, and a second, all in favor, say aye, aye. And I will make the up uh outside the meeting announcement that the Civic Founding